...out tonight to the students that formed the Living Wax Museum. That was very interesting and educational. I thank you very much for your hard work in portraying your characters. Okay, tonight we'll be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Mrs. Zook's Monocracy Elementary Center class.
Before we actually begin, like, I'm sorry, I can't say. I just, I wanted to first of all, say thank you for inviting us, and I wanted to welcome the kindergarten students of mine naked. And I just wanted to talk a little bit about what we've been doing in our classroom for the pair of staff this evening. You know, as you know, as everybody knows, kindergarten is a busy place. So we're all aware that kindergarten is a busy place, a place of discovery, a place of learning, and not just only necessary academic skills, but important social skills, too. No matter what we're learning in our kindergarten classroom, we are always actively engaged. So tonight when we do our school pledge, you'll notice that we've learned hand motions and body movements to go along with the words to match the promise that we make towards school each day. These gestures are similar to those that we learned at the beginning of the school year when we were introduced to our classroom roles, too. Along with learning that we are part of a classroom and a school community, we've learned that we are part of a larger, very special community, that we are citizens of a very great nation. Many words, symbols, and important people have been introduced so that we can better understand what the United States stands for. This past week, we've integrated literacy and math into a mini patriotic theme, and some of the things that we did include listening to letter sounds and patriotic words and recording them on whiteboards, identifying and reading sight words in the Pledge of Allegiance, counting sets of ten stars on American flag coloring page, counting those sets of ten to discover we've got fifty stars standing for the fifty states on the American flag. We're very honored and very proud to recite both our school pledge and the Pledge of Allegiance tonight.
I am a Monocracy Elementary Center student, and I am responsible, respectful, safe, honest, and I strive every day to be the best student I can be. I am a student of the United States of America, and to be qualified for this stance, one nation, under God, indivisible, the liberty and innocence of all.
Come on down, guys. Come on over. Come on. Come on over. Kindergarten, come on.
Harris, any pictures of Harris?
We'll be shot.
Smile, say cheese.
fourth grade students come out and show what they had done last week representing their grade level. Our fourth grade students presented our program last week as a grade level, and two of our fourth grade teachers, Mrs. Rita Freed and Mrs. Angela Owens, are going to give a little bit more information about the program, and then have certificates for all the student participants who are with us this evening.
We'd like to thank our administration and our, for supporting our students and our staff in the efforts to keep school engaging and allowing us to come here tonight to present. We'd also like to thank our students for all the hard work they put in preparing for our live art museum and for the parents who watched gather materials and make some extra props and coming out last week to support us.
So basically, the fourth graders at Berthold Elementary Center completed a unit that integrated the language arts. They read a biography about a famous person, then they wrote an essay telling who the person is and why they are famous, and the culminating activity was a live wax museum in which students presented their information in the form of a first-person narrative. Our fourth graders really helped bring history to life. They had a great time doing it. Nicely done.
Thank you.
And our fourth grade students are here on a clearing of the future, and we're going to get your certificate from the school board. Abby Decker, AKA Teller Swift. Iya Der, another singer, Ariana Grande. Riley Deroff, Harry Houdini, and Eric West, that was his name when he was born. Samantha Dersalitis, Michelle Obama. Haley Hadman, one of my favorites, Walt Disney. Juliana Hall, Jules Milala, say her last name for me. Joseph Five, thank you. Nathan Kemp, Michael Jordan. Cecilia Clementes, Princess Diana. Kelly Redner, Marie Curie. Anna Shalburn, Pocahontas. She probably should have been standing next to Walt Disney. Avery Spar, Sally Ride. Leona Solstice, Sally Ride's twin Sally Ride. And Kelly Wagner, and Kelly is Princess Elizabeth I, correct?
Queen.
A queen. I do know everything.
And she made us bow before she gave her presentation.
Mr. Wolf, I just wanted to say I love that was fantastic, and thank you to the teachers and the students who put that together, as well as the parents who helped their children prepare for this. It was excellent.
Yeah, it was very educational, very diverse group of characters from history. Well, parents, if you would like to spend the next couple hours with us, you're more than welcome. Otherwise, if you would like to go home, now would be the time.
I love this part. Everybody just leaves, it's like two pieces.
Mr. Martino, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Wolf. Mr. Bates?
Here.
Mr. Kurtz?
Here.
Mr. Martino, here. Mr. Richard Neal?
Here.
Mr. Potts?
Here.
Mr. Rathke?
Here.
Mr. Scott?
Here.
Mr. Dowsky?
Here.
Mr. Wolf? Here. Okay, the procedures for public participation are printed inside the blue cover of the agenda. If you have not already done so, please sign in at the back of the room. If there are attachments, there are copies to be viewed in the back on the table, please do not take them with you. If you would like to address the board, please approach the microphone, state your name and address for the record, sign in at the podium, and you will be afforded three minutes to make a presentation to the board. Under announcements, I don't have any agenda edits. Does any board members have edits to the agenda?
I have one, Mr. Wolf. Since I had run it up, I intend to see, I'm looking to approve the salary deficit. Megan Whopper, I believe, if my math is correct, that should be $270, not $240. It's not a big deal, but it's a $30 difference.
It's at 70%. It was at 70%.
Sorry?
The difference was... The difference was what was presented earlier minus the difference, I don't have it in front of me right now. It came out, it was, the way it's based on the scale, instead of receiving 60%, she received 70%. She received the 60%, so that difference is that amount.
So you're saying the 240 is correct?
Right, I went through it with Lauren, and that's the amount. I don't know how you're getting a different number. I mean, it's a personnel item, we can discuss it executive, but...
Well, we're going to vote on it now, so it's...
Okay, I don't know how.
The administrators that got the distinguished adjective?
Correct.
Received 2.1%. Chalia 1.8.
Okay, okay. That, the rating is on a sliding scale, it's on a scale, so just because they got 2.1 doesn't mean they all got that.
All the ones that got distinguished got 2.1.
Right.
So if her rating was elevated to distinguished, she would have gotten 2.1% instead of 1.8. The difference between 1.8 and 2.1 is $270.
I'd have to, I have to go back and look at my notes, because she received 70%. That 70% is based over her salary.
Your email says 270.
So does Lauren's email, so it's 270 as well.
Okay, then it's a typo in here. Okay.
Okay, so, yeah, my microphone died. Yes, it's a typo, 10C, should be $270.
I don't want to let even be, I may be should say motion to appoint Bridge Martino as a delegate to the National Native Schoolwork Association October 2017 voting meeting.
Can you read?
Yeah, sure. Motion for appointing Bridge Martino as Daniel Villanery School District's delegate to the October 2017 Native Schoolwork Association voting meeting.
It's a motion to approve, motion to appoint?
Motion to approve, well, this is a motion to approve him to attend, not to appoint him as our delegate, which are typically, I mean, anybody could attend, but not anybody who's in a... Mr. Super, do you have something to add?
And Mr. Wolf, while we're adding that, if there are any other board members that want to, or are entitled to send to, so if there's another board member that wants to be elected as a delegate, they should speak now.
And they are technically voting delegates, right?
Yes.
Who'll be casting the vote?
Yes.
Okay, any other agenda edits? All right, hearing none. There will be an executive session following the voting meeting to discuss personnel issues?
And a litigation.
In a litigation matter. At this time, are there any presentations by the public on agenda items? Seeing none. Move to seven, the consent agenda. Are there any objection to any items listed in the consent agenda?
I'm looking at item seven, A, will be G.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kurtz, second by Ms. Kowalski. Discussion?
Oh, Mr. Harris, do you speak to I, a, would we approve the position of Chief Academic Officer? I just want to give Mr. Rathke a second. This is, you're saying this will approve job description and position?
Motion to approve the position of two, okay. You're creating, you're creating the position.
And the job description, my number two, Mr. Harris, that is, all was discussed in the Personnel Committee, and there were some questions about the job descriptions and where the responsibilities fall under that position, but the consensus from administration was that those duties are incumbents in the alignment, other duties may be assigned as needed to the incumbent, the remuneration of the administration. The duties are, they must perform all other duties as assigned. So, I think maybe then we just discussed the job description as we presented from the administration, and I don't think that would be the consensus, and I don't, but I guess that's, so Mr. Harris, you're saying this is for approval of job description and the positions now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, Mr. Wolf, a couple items first, I was looking for a little clarification under the, going through the Treasures Report, I was losing track of things, moving around, and lost track of the Democrats, something to characterize, is, what was going on? Anybody, I thought it was all that made me characterize, there was different, a lot of the places that were listed in categories, I was following that.
Oh, the budget transfers, is that what you're...
Well, that was, it was billing, there was debt, it's credits, and it's set in small category, and it was...
Yeah, the budget transfers, there were a lot of transferring into the correct accounts. There's a lot of budgeting, the accounts according to PDE, they're requiring that certain accounts get eliminated, certain accounts be used, and I've been addressing all of it through, I'm almost through the entire ledger, reclassifying, titling things properly, putting stuff in the right areas. It was, there was a lot of changes that came down approximately two years ago, and it, now we're catching up with all those changes.
And when the business part, to get a chance, I was trying to follow, just curious what our total expenditure for our personal, we still have a little from, from, you know, Twitter, I'd be curious of that. I asked someone, I'd say 55,000, which I find kind of hard to...
They did not all...
I think that was total, total loss for personal, for Trump.
We're still waiting up to the time to get...
Okay, so leave it at that.
Yeah, we almost have that, I think, sitting, did we get that? I don't remember, that last one needs to be approved, right?
And then under item, I had a, just a follow-up, with the New School Plus, I had a conversation following the IU, so, they are actually working, we're just gonna approve them, bringing onboard a new student database technology, so, we're looking into that kind of, looking into that software, so, another one for Mr. Bass to look over, through the IU. And they also did say that, living down the road, we chose to switch to your contract, they said they would work with us to work through that, in case they would, so, if we were hostage, we'll do your contract with New School Plus, so, they had a conversation about that.
Thank you, Mr. Rathke.
Mr. Wolf, I have a question. Item eight, C1, we're voting to approve this summer school program, but it's pending a grant. Mr. Harris, have we received the grant yet?
Not, not at the moment. So this is pending?
The grant. It wouldn't happen if there's no grant.
Any other board discussion?
Just the positions, we were discussing a few minutes ago. We're just approving the position, we're not creating any personal changes.
Just creating the position with the description.
Position, and I understand, Mr. Scott, we advertised and believed in it.
Yes.
Mr. Martino, the consent agenda, please. Consent? Yes.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 9-0.
Moving to finances.
The poll made a motion for item nine, A.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kurtz, second by Mr. Rathke. Board discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please, Mr. Martino.
I'm sorry, Mr. Wolf, I was being asked a question. Mr. Kurtz made the motion, who's second?
Mr. Rathke.
Roll call vote. Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. Martino, yes. Mr. Richard Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Rathke?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Dowsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Bates?
No.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Motion passes eight, one.
Moving to 10 personnel, do you have a motion for any of the items under 10?
Make a motion for item 10, A, and B, as amended.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kurtz, second by Mr. Rathke. Board discussion? Opposed? Motion passes 9-0. New business, there's none. Are there any presentations by the public on any issues? Thank.
Perry Tembling did it, Perry Tembling, he did it, he used 2032 ESpace. This one comment, I saw a article in the paper yesterday, it was very disturbing, that the school districts honor for their music, and the integration of their music, and our school district was one of them. Everyone around us was, Twin Valley expert, expert, our rival, rivals, expert. But we weren't, and we sat, let's tell us something, and let's get before music, we go there. I mean, coming here alive, preaching, our music has relaxed, we're not giving us enough towards our music. Let's make a, make a effort for our music. Those balls out there bouncing around, get enough money, let's get some money for our music departments.
Well, the administration did recognize that, at least the high school music program is struggling, so at our last meeting, we voted to move the high school band into a co-curricular status, as it was back in, what I would consider its heyday, back in 2008, 2010. At that time, when my daughters were in it, it was students, I think we had 140, 150 kids, and now we're maybe 50. So what that'll do is alleviate financial, there'll be no activity fee assessed to those students, so hopefully that'll generate more interest to come out and take part in the music program. Thank you, Mr. Temple. Is there any other public comment?
I'd just like to add, you know, I brought that to Mr. Harris this evening about that article. I thought it was disturbing also, but if you ever attend any of the events at the school, especially the Jazz Fest and the Edelsoata, I think you see we have a great program. It's a shame, not always you need to name in the paper, you know, you're one of the best, but it would have been nice, so hopefully Mr. Harris takes a look at that, and we can get that resolved, and they will be the forefront, actually.
Do you have a board discussion?
Mr. Wolf, on a different note, Mr. Harris animated this paper, reminded me, I don't know how aware all the board members are of this proposal.
So, at our last meeting, we voted to move the high school band into a co-curricular status as it was back in what I would consider its heyday, back in 2008, 2010. At that time, when my daughters were in it, it was students, I think we had 140, 150 kids, and now we're maybe 50. So, what that'll do is alleviate financial... There'll be no activity fee assessed to those students, so hopefully that'll generate more interest to come out and take part of the music program. Thank you, Mr. Temple. Is there any other public comment?
I'd just like to add, you know, I brought that to Mr. Harris this evening about that article. I thought it was disturbing also, but I'd like to say if you ever attend any of the events at the schools, especially the Jazz Fest and the Edson, I think you see we have a great program. It's a shame, not always you need your name in the paper, you know, if you're one of the best, but it would have been nice, so hopefully Mr. Harris takes a look at that and we can get that resolved, and they will be the forefront actually.
Any other board discussion?
Mr. Wolf, on a different note, Mr. Harris, having this paper reminded me, I don't know how aware all the board members are of this proposal to conduct a staff review, so I think it needs to go in the committee in a hold in May to be locally discussed and then then voted on. Has... I just wanted to mention, has everyone received a copy of this proposal?
No.
Okay.
Can you...
Do we go out and say?
I'm not sure. That's why I say it needs to go in the...
Okay.
So, if you would, you can send it out to all the board members. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martino.
Yeah, I mean, I think this is something we've been asking about for a while now. I don't want to be rushed, like, when we get it sent out, and then we have to quickly scramble to get it reviewed, approved, tweaked, changed, then so we get on the voting meeting. So, I mean, the sooner we get it, the better. And then, you know, we talked about this before, but this is the plan that what we're going to be presenting is a plan that each of the principals feels is going to best work for their school and not some, you know, specific numbers based. Like, we'll get to that, but like, for now, we want to see what each principal feels they need to operate for next year, assuming that falls within the guidelines for it.
We're talking different things. Mr. Scott, this is a test on a staff review of secretaries.
This is an efficiency study, basically.
Okay. Yeah.
And the last thing we want is for you to be rushed, though.
No. Okay, so that brings my next question in, is when are we going to see a proposal for staffing?
Okay, I have it. I know Mr. Martino was asking for it, so I showed him. I thought he wanted to discuss it, but it could be my mistake. He wants to go in the... I can send it out tonight, this week, and you can see what the proposal is.
No, no, Mr. Scott, I was going to ask you about the teacher staffing.
Yeah.
Oh, the teacher staffing?
Yeah, I'm talking about the teacher staffing.
Okay. We're going to discuss that on Wednesday for the budget meeting.
Okay. When are we going to see it?
Can you get it out tomorrow, sir? I can get it out tomorrow.
Like, that's what I'm saying. Like, I don't want to go and discuss something I'm looking at for the first time.
No.
Like, I don't even want to talk about the announcement.
It's been done by the staff already. It's... I can send it out tomorrow.
All right. Sorry for the interruption.
Any other board discussion? Motion to adjourn?
Um, I'm going to adjourn.
Uh?
Second.
We're adjourned. Second, passing through. Stop? Uh, yes.